Mayor, how are you, sir?
Good.
He's able to grab it.
Good, how are you?
I think it is just that is Festival Park and the Crosswalk Shield has what's it? Third or something like that? Yeah, but it's all these.
Yeah, we're pretty close to.
One of the pockets of the break, sorry.
Yes. I must say, you want offices?
Yeah.
I don't know if I can be of help.
Thanks for your help today.
That's for you. Oh, I needed to tell you, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
You know, we got the bill today.
Did you?
Okay, we got the bill today. And big trouble here. Bill is.
I have no P O.
Okay. So what I have to create a P O is. Okay. Okay, so we need to make the bill. If we're late to fill the bill, I think we can tolerate it.
So we'll, yeah, I'll talk to White Harlem also. So just like, okay, we'll.
All right, because Bill came in. Is it rated amount?
Yeah, it's.
Half February in the.
Three months.
Yeah, it's four months.
All right, I'll let them know. Thanks, Jake.
All right, welcome back. We are in session. At this time, we will move to item 5401, which is a report from Downtown Alliance and their request for assistance. We'd like to recognize former Mayor Cody Travani joins us in a meeting shortly, but the current owner of Scotty.
Mayor, I'm not going to do much more than what you just did. Can produce the Downtown Alliance. Many of the members are here tonight. They will raise their hands, but they've been working very, very hard to come out with some longer-term solutions for downtown issues. With that, I'll turn it over to what you're doing.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate the time. Have seen you in a long time. We're coming up to. We're not really here to ask for anything. We're here to offer our hand in yours to help make our downtown a better place. I feel we're able to discuss some of those ideas with you tonight and hope to get you as excited as we are about downtown. Does everyone kind of see the slide here? We need to turn it a lot.
Yeah, you turn out the.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you so much. Our vision and mission is very, very similar to the city. We didn't meet last February with over about eighty people in downtown. We started talking about what we could do to make it a better place and came up with our vision of it becoming economically and culturally vibrant and a destination for people, not just to live, but to work and play and spend money and all those good things. We have a great mission and statement as well, very consistent with the city's direction that you're all in. We broke our work up over the last year into economic development, marketing and promotion, member services and design and safety. And tonight, we're really here to present several initiatives in a couple of these categories. We would be here for hours if we were telling you all the work that's going on in all of those. But our focus tonight is going to be primarily on economic development. We know that's a key interest of the city and also design and safety. They're all really related, but all of us related. Our focus tonight will be on those two primary areas. As I mentioned earlier, just to keep you kind of in the process, dozens of people involved in setting goals and identifying action items for us. And we work in small committees throughout the year. So the recommendations that we bring for your consideration tonight have gone through a process very similar to what's up with those. A lot of input, a lot of prioritizing goals, a lot of work at the committee level. Came through the committees, recommendations to the board of directors, board of directors discussed, approved, moved forward to the membership. So what we present to you tonight comes from the downtown stakeholders, those that live and work and support our downtown. And making the fact that this we mentioned earlier, we are the people that live and work and invest out here. We want to be partners with the city with exciting, innovative ways that we want to bring for discussion tonight as you continue to move our city forward and our downtown. So we're here really as your partner in looking for opportunities to make it an even more special place. And we'll begin with public safety. We're going to have several people make presentations tonight to your interest. And Pat Wright, who is a very prominent in this committee, has some recommendations for your consideration in the area of public safety. Later, we're going to talk about design. We're also going to talk about some economic development issues, but they're all related. None of them stand on their own. Public safety is a critical part, and so the other areas will be open. But we'll begin with Pat Wright's presentation.
Well, one of the things that as far as public safety goes, we felt like was keeping people from really enjoying their experiences downtown, whether they come down to shop or to eat or whether they work downtown or live downtown, is that where you're inundated by panhandling, which is where we go, probably on your way to being here tonight, when you have to stop by somebody, ask for the money. It happens way too often, and it unfortunately gives people a sense that downtown is not a safe place. So we considered panhandling to be one of the most important things to tackle. And we had a really great group of folks who came together and really came up with a work on the strategy for combating the panhandling. So the first part is compassionate. This is the part here, the box that you see. And our plan is to have six of these created. Local artist donated his art, his time to create the artwork on the box to help inform people that panhandling, when you give to panhandlers generally the money does not go to help them, it goes to supply their habits. And if they really want to do to help support people for asking for money, then they could have a heart and donate in the box, and then one of the groups will come down and give their box to them. So they have a heart program. There'll be six boxes, as I mentioned, and we've had them sort of roughly located near the new library, over on Franklin, near the parking deck, near Los Meadows, and then a couple of my Hay Street and down by Husky as well. So again, everyone will be encouraged through a marketing program to get their funds into the boxes instead of getting to the panhandlers directly. And then we went through a vetting process, and Operation Inasmuch came out as a clear winner, as the group would at least initially begin servicing the boxes, totally responsible for taking the money out and then using it for all kinds of works. And they do much more. I don't know if you know a lot about Operation Inasmuch, but they do more than just feed folks. They have training. They have classes they provide. They teach computer skills. They help to get resumes together. They're working on housing. So it's kind of a really a good, broad group to get the money to, to help these folks get off the street. Again, the education is the second part. So with compassion, education is the second part. And the targeted message will go on throughout downtown, where there'll be posters, signs, table tents at restaurants, you know, informing people of the program, letting them know that asking for money in the downtown area is illegal and that they don't feel compelled to give. It's hard for people sometimes. They feel, oh, you know, he's down on his life. Let me just give him a few bucks. So we're trying to make sure that they understand that that's not really necessary. So that's one of the target audiences. We also are doing some marketing target to the panhandlers themselves, to let them know that downtown is off limits. It's no longer fair game. You can't come down here and ask people for money. And so we're pulling that group as well, and the store owners and the property owners, so that they can help inform their customers and clients of the new program. We're hoping to create a public service announcement, which I'm actually trying to try to get to right here. Similar to the one that was done in Streetport. Well, what it is, as you might have seen there, was a little P S A that just kind of used the typical panhandler cardboard box out there, trying to persuade people to give money. And actually has some of the truths that we're trying to get out there, so we're hoping to do that today. All right, marketing, again, we're continuing to try to promote downtown as a safe place to be. People have this assumption that it's not safe to, you know, it's very safe. So we're really pushing it out there. We've done a lot of good marketing efforts to make sure people understand that downtown is a great place to be and it's very safe. And one way to do that is. The last of the legs of this project, process, if I're in the enforcement lines, and that's hopefully where we're going to need some help. What we want to do is what strengthen the city's current panhandling ordinance by defining what aggressive behavior is and identify some condened penalties that will go along with that. Let people really get in your face and stop cars in the street. We need to stop that. Consider the development of new loitering ordinance that will help keep folks from slipping into downtown buildings. Make donating from a moving vehicle illegal in downtown areas is really important because you've got a lot of people who stand out on the street corner selling things or just, you know, acting large and go on. They want to make that illegal in the downtown area. We've been working a lot with the folks at the police department, and we're trying to get them to design the calls for service that for panhandling has a line item right now, which says, you know, it could be disturbance or unsafe person or mental health issue or something like that. But we wanted to do a panhandling as a line item, so we can track him and report on how well our program is doing. And then we also want to work with the F U for sleeping under downtown bridges and public buildings. And the, of course, the Anne Street Bridge is a perfect example of what happens when people live under bridges and they end up destroying it. And we also want to request the new bridge design to include any loitering design elements that will keep people from sleeping under it. That's all just a part of the design. Still in the enforcement area, we want to promote the use of the city's trespassing contracts with private businesses and organizations, so they understand that they have to come down and follow along to take a picture of their trespassing sign in their business in order to get the police to do somebody off their premises after hours. And we want to develop a list of folks who want to come down and feed the hungry. You think there's a way to do that anyway, but we want people to be pre-approved because we're getting conflicting folks coming down in different parts, and we want to have one area where people can come down. And if they so desire to feed folks, that they come down, and then they also are responsible for the cleanup, because there's been a lot of trash and debris behind after these feeding events, that then the city or someone else has to get in and clean up and just sort them away sore. And as far as cleaning up, that goes along with the next point, which is desire to develop a process to pick up discarded items. A lot of our panhandlers will walk around and they'll carry suitcases or bags or whatever. And what we want to do is develop a way that we can allow the police to come pick them up without, you know, having any issues with folks. We also are interested in developing kind of a downtown citizens on patrol, so that we can engage the rest of the people that are down here and are really interested in helping to make this be a safe place as ambassadors. And really, the more people that you have on the street who are helping get the word out, I think the safer than people feel coming back in, because they're friendly faces, helping folks, asking for any directions or anything like that. And then, of course, we need more police coverage in our downtown areas, especially in peak times and areas where we have specialty events and activities going on to help, again, police presence. It's really great when you have forces, because those were a huge presence. And, you know, I understand that doesn't work anymore, but, you know, if we had some more bicycle police, that'd be great, or even foot pop would be great to have down here, just so people can see the police and it just, you know, builds a feeling of trust and the folks will come down here. And that is all for me. Thank you.
Hello. Tonight, I am Suzy Arubowski, Chair of the Economic Development Committee. I apologize if my voice goes in and out. Usually I've been fighting this problem so well. The Economic Development Committee is set up to do three different things. We actually have a couple more. And these are the three objectives that we really wanted to push forward and that we've been working very hard diligently on. One of them is the vacant. One of them was the vacant building ordinance. The other one was an empty storefront policy, and the other one was modern. And these were the biggest responses that we got from downtown business owners as to what might be like forgiving them from the tuning, from having a good business model storefront-wise and some of the things that could help the vulnerability of our downtown people. The vacant building ordinance. As you can see here, vacant building means that it lacks a habitable presence for human beings and has a legal right, human beings who have a legal right to be on the premises. It lacks utility services. It may not be passing inspection anymore. Everyone, there's, nothing can happen legally in this building anymore. This building that was on Person Street was a hundred-year-old building. And there's a couple more buildings that are on the list for not being habitable. And the biggest thing is, is that downtown is losing that. We're losing that historic piece. We're losing that preservation of what we have here. This building on Person Street is down, and now we don't, we can't restore it. Something new will go up and we'll lose, we'll lose that historic ability of what downtown, that nice presence that we have downtown. So we put together a committee, and this committee wanted to put together a vacant building ordinance, something that would preserve the downtown's historic integrity and protect it from this blightedness that might happen here and there on some of these streets. As you can see, that these are some of the blighted buildings that we have. Some of the things that we came up with, and we didn't just come up with these things, but they came from different areas and different parts of North Carolina, Hickory, North Carolina. There is, they developed some of these ordinances, these vacant building ordinances, to help preserve their downtown and also promote what's going on. Quarterly requirements for these types of ordinances are quarterly life safety inspections, also maintenance requirements, security requirements, future proof of insurance requirements, and local agent required for out-of-area owners. A lot of downtown, we have buildings that their owners are out of town. You can't get touch with them, and nobody knows where they are, and people, people really would like to see some of these places active and live. Exemptions. A building that is actively listed or offered for sale or leased at market rates shall be exempt from an annual registration date. This goes back to making sure that these properties are registered, that we know which ones are empty, that they're actively being promoted for sale or for lease, and they actively want businesses in there. It's very hard to have these active businesses when you have a dead business next to you or a dead building next to you. And we really want to promote that downtown wants to be alive, that we want to preserve what's there, and that we want to make sure that we're moving forward. This is a list of the nineteen buildings currently that are vacant. There's three on Donaldson Street. There's six on Hay Street alone. There's one building on the Market Square. There's four on Maxwell Street, and then five on Person. These are the major walkability places in downtown right now, and these buildings are just intermittent between all the open and live businesses that we try to see. These are examples of the businesses that you'll see. Person Street, Maxwell Street, just some of the differences that are there. These are the other ones on Maxwell, the Market Square, the Lord's Building, and the Invis, Prince Charles. This walkability goes into another piece, which is this empty storefront. One of the things we thought was if we have these empty vacant buildings, or we have these buildings that are up for sale or up leased, and we're trying to make sure that the walkability stays there, one of the things we wanted to do was implement an empty storefront policy. And this, what this is going to do is promote the pedestrian walkability and visual interest in the downtown area, so that you don't have these blighted buildings in between one store to the next to the next. If you see, this is over on. Thank you. And as you can see, there's coverings in the windows that look bare, and that street over there, people are afraid to walk. They're afraid that somebody might jump out from there. But if you have something visually interesting in the windows or something that you would like to see, people, people would walk down there. It would look nicer. It would feel safer. Covering windows with paper in the downtown retail, retailer is restricted, so that you can't just put up paper. Just put brown paper or something like that. It just looks odd. Vacant windows downtown have to be rotating displays of interesting materials. And one of the things that Downtown Alliance would like to do is with the Arts Council is create a library of things for people to put in their windows, so that there's art pieces or art posters or something like that that they can put and display in their windows. They can come and check them out from the Downtown Alliance. They're pre-approved to put up, and they're visually interesting as well. These are some of the, some of our testing areas that we've used. This is an example. On the, on the left is an example of a building with that paper on there. That is at the edge of, on Hay Street. There's a bunch of businesses, and then all of a sudden you see this building, and it's got brown paper. And it's just kind of visually takes away from the other businesses that are there. On the right-hand side, you'll see, this is actually the Capitol Building, where we have partnered with the Arts Council, and they have put up displays in the window down there to make it more visually appealing, so that when you walk downtown and you're walking on Hay Street, you have something else to look at. It just doesn't look like an empty visual storefront. This is another example. So you have this on Donaldson Street, which we just looked at, and then on Maxwell Street. There's nice displays as you're walking down Maxwell Street. You can go down Maxwell Street between the Arts Council Building and some of these empty spaces, and you don't feel like it's so barren, so unsafe. And the last piece of the downtown buildings and ordinances that we wanted to approach with, that we hear a lot of from our business owners and building owners downtown, is the sign ordinance. This is a big tackling. We had a lot of, we had a lot of work sessions, and we had a lot of cooperation from the city staff to really help us put some of these together. Some of the things that we talked about was, there's a lot of buildings downtown that already have a historic building name. We wanted to be able to keep that and have it not count against the businesses, so that they could have a main primary signage. And as you see, what we've done here is we've just kind of changed what the primary signage might look like on this building. The next thing we wanted to do is to be able to have some other secondary types, as I mentioned. This one's a little exaggerated, so that you can see it, but this is an urban organic. It might be a grocery store. But you'll be able to visually tell that, because in the windows, you can see some broccoli and some RHOs and some neat things on the windows, which currently businesses are not allowed to do. The other thing that our sign ordinance would allow people to do is to automatically put up outings that have words on them, those types of things. What it does is it gives everyone a set of things that they can do instead of a thing that they, something that they have to get an exception for. The other thing that people have asked for is things like a flag graphic sign, which you see there already says, "Fresh Nashville Law," so that people can see the business and the signage from the side of the building as they're walking. Yes, sir.
Tell the question, for current historic standards, I know that it doesn't resolve, so the council has the authority to make changes, and the Historic Resource Commission has to provide a lot of changes. Are many of the things you're showing us here restricted under the current historic standards?
Some of them are, and that's why we've been working very closely with Mr. Schuford and Mr. Dallas, to try to combine some of those things that are not allowed to make it more business-friendly. So we have done some great work together and gotten some reprieve and some suggestions, and it's still, all a work in progress, but it is, we have been looking at that historic resource piece and then that, what is the, what is the downtown ordinance on signage? And how do we need to look at that in a different manner because of things like the walkability piece and buildings that had historic names and those types of things? So we have been working.
So then, you anticipate probably coming back to the council and say, hey, would you be willing to update, you know, the whole standards that are currently in place?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One of the other things that we failed to do is fly not only the American.
Suzy, hold on one second. Let Scott speak to that issue specifically.
Great question, Councilmember Mo, because the historic sign guidelines for signage and the sign code for historic downtown go hand in hand. So if you give direction to proceeding this manner, then we will bring to you adjustments to the design guidelines that are in concert with the changes to the code. In fact, we've already discussed the design guideline piece with Historic Resource Commission, and they have forwarded them of the suggestions at this point in time, but it's just waiting an opportunity to get before you do.
Okay.
And these are just some of the things that people have asked for, to be able to fly anywhere with a flag without giving a special permit, without it being an additional thing that they have to worry about having out there. They might want to fly a flag that says antiques, and under some of the new things that we've worked, we've looked at, that's a part of that, to be able to fly another flag. One of the other neat things is the restaurants downtown have asked, can we put up a menu box and not have it count against us? So you'll see a little menu box here on this, on this feed. So it's just incorporating all these different pieces that are unique to downtown into the sign ordinance, and we've been working, trying to push all these things forward. So in the end, you have a building that used to look So in the end, you have a building that used to look like this, to a building that looks like this, and it's more user-friendly and you can see it. And attractive to the downtown, and walkability, and people can see it from the street, you know. Hey, there's a grocery store, there's a, there's a little urban place that I might like to go to. It keeps to the safety and the design and the friendliness, and most importantly, this is business friendly. It really allows the business to move forward and not have a bunch of red tape that they have to go through in order to start a business in downtown area. And that's what we're going to do.
Thank you, Suzanne. I'm Eric Clenstrom, and I'm the Chair of the Design Subcommittee for the Downtown Alliance. As part of the retreat process that Tony referenced, we really came up with four primary design areas that stakeholders really wanted to have addressed downtown. One, we wanted to develop a neighborhood plan for downtown. We've done the Renaissance Plan, we've done these various plans, which included the 3,000 acres or whatever is of the larger municipal districts. But neighborhood plan is actually really getting down at a pedestrian level to look at what are the things that we need to do to make our downtown stronger. And building upon what Suzanne presented is also beginning to look, what are the next steps we should take in terms of moving our downtown beyond basically the one block depth that it is today? And working with Scott Schuf, with Scott and his department, we really have come up to, there's several neighborhoods in downtown that we're going to look at. And we're going to be partnering with the Urban Land Institute, and we'll be beginning that planning process this summer. But as you look at some of those, I think the last report that came out talked about Artist House in Russell. If you hear all the chatter about the post office, if you look at that big parcel of land, that really could have a huge impact in terms of what happens to that facility, or what happens to that land if the post office should go someplace or be raided or reduced. So developing a neighborhood plan is one of the major tasks we'll be doing. We're going to work closely with the Arts Council to promote and develop more public art. Actually, I'm going to go into that a little bit in more detail, but that is going to be done. They're issuing, we're issuing an RFQ with the Arts Council to solicit a consultant to help us develop both a public arts master plan, but also begin the planning for the Art Center in the community district in downtown. And we really hope to coordinate that with what the ULI group is going to be doing, and also the group that is currently looking at the next use development in the City of Fayetteville. And then the other thing we wanted to do is look at, collect suggestions from all the stakeholders, and from our members, residents, and businesses downtown, and come up with both a list of short-term and long-term projects, and what, and ultimately, an annual list of what we're calling small achievable projects. It wouldn't fit on the slide, but this is the, and you can't even read it here, there's so many that we came up with like fifty short and long-term projects, and we've been working with Mike Gibson, with Rusty, with Scott, in terms of how can we get these in, you know, in the planning stages. It was really great to hear from really the people who work and live downtown and see the issues, and really know what's going on there. So from that, we developed a small achievable projects list, and I'm just going to go through a couple of those projects that are on the list, that we hope to achieve this year. Obviously, one of the things we're designing to want to beautify downtown, one of the primary examples, and if you go down Anderson Street, there's numerous tree stumps from where the Bradford era, that they're slowly all dying. And as you probably know, they're notorious for losing limbs, closing streets, falling apart. So we're going to be starting with Anderson Street as a pilot project, begin replacing those trees, landscaping the beds around the trees, so we can begin to develop a streetscape like what we have here, adjoining the 300-block development. One of the other things, projects that came up is kind of the Airborne Museum is, has architectural lighting at night, and it's a very recognizable landmark. The same facilities, the same capabilities are built into Festival Park. And so one of the things that we're going to invite is we're going to install timers on a couple of those lighting circuits, so it can be lit up at night. Probably going to trade the fixtures out for LED, so the cost will be minimal. But again, that will help kind of reduce some of the activity that goes on there at night. And one of the, one of the goals that came out is that we really want to try to activate green spaces downtown. And so, again, this will make that park more inviting in the evenings and at dusk, and hopefully reduce, and make downtown feel like a safer place, but also help recognize a recognizable destination that we have. Couple of the other projects that have come up, and again, these are in the planning stages to happen within the next year. Festival Park, I think, exceeded everybody's expectations, and everyone's probably had to go through the little cattle gate there that's the bridge. So there's a couple of different options that are being looked at in terms of whether we widen the bridge, or whether we put a parallel span in. Those plans are in the works, and we're working closely with Mike Gibson to make sure we get the input of all the stakeholders, the Dogwood Festival, everyone that uses the park on a regular basis. Another area that I think is, and you're going to see some activity in the near future, is our historic cemeteries, Cross Creek and also Brookline Cemetery. Is with the completion of the Grove Street Bridge and the connection of Linear Park, hopefully we're going to be seeing some more traffic in that area. And our cemeteries are really a lost opportunity that we would like to implement both a maintenance plan and also a landscape plan. And working with Bruce Dawes and Mike Gibson, again, we hope to be able to have that plan out this year, and are looking at bringing in a cemetery specialist who will actually come and train, give the volunteers, in terms of how do you maintain these historic headstones and grave sites. Back again to the Festival Park area, this is, if you look in the distance, you're seeing the Festival Park Plaza Building and also up to the 300-block. But one of the things, and you may have already noticed, there's been some cleaning out of the trees in the area. This, right over here is kind of the performance area of Festival Park. But according to the promenade, in the original master plan, there was supposed to be a continuation of Linear Park over into that wooded area. That's actually the historic Scott Springs area. And there's been some unauthorized camping going on over there in the woods. And I think in part to help control that, but also open up, there's about three acres of parkland over there that's really underutilized, we're going to be extending a Linear Park-type trail through the woods. This will provide some much-needed shade and some additional area for when we have our festivals and events down at Festival Park. There's kind of an image of how that would look with the sidewalk running through there. Additionally, along Ray Avenue, obviously, with almost any event, we have to close down Ray Avenue, because it really is, the sidewalks are inadequate, and in fact, on the west side of Ray Avenue, there's not a sidewalk. So one of the things, again, a suggestion that came out of all these fifty projects we identified, and working again closer with Mike Gibson, is installing a sidewalk on the west side of Ray Avenue. And if you, depending on which way we go with the Festival Park Bridge, if we replace it with a wire one, we'll actually have an extra bridge left over. So, you know, we're looking at, you know, do we relocate that, and again, have a parallel pedestrian connection on the west side of Ray Avenue? There's probably almost two hundred residents in downtown now, and there's probably at least a hundred pets. So one of the suggestions is that we want to place some more pet stations around. And we're identifying those, and we're in the Parks Department again, to locate some of those around downtown. And then finally, we've identified one area that had a lot of, if we could address, and again, it would achieve several of our goals, it had the opportunity to activate green space, it had the opportunity to beautify downtown, and it had a tremendous capacity for public art. And that is basically the triangle that's bordered by Maiden Lane, Old Street, and Anderson Street. There's a, currently, there is a park down in the lower area that goes under the underpass to Cross Creek. And what we'd like to do is to develop that, that's kind of a view of the area as it is now, is to develop that into a much more active green space. In fact, it would be downtown's first and only playground area. We would also upgrade the area underneath the bridge, so that it could accommodate picnic tables, and outdoor, like a life-size chess patio, and enhance the landscaping in that entire area. And because of the proximity to Fascinate U, the Charter Art School, the church schools down there, we have a lot of very interested partners who are interested, one, in using this, but also adopting it as an amenity that their members and guests will use. So within that, we're also looking at, if you drive by there at night today, it's pitch black at night. We're looking at opportunities for ways that we can creatively install security lighting, that they also become like a public art project, or again, make it someplace that's going to attract people, instead of scare people away from it. And we're looking at, again, working with Mike Gibson, Historic Resources, looking at, you know, coming up with a really kind of creative and dynamic play environment, again, that will help really activate this downtown park, and bring people to an area where they currently are not coming down. And also looking at things like where we have these staircases, and even the walls under the overpass. The school, the Charter Art School, would like to develop chalked art walls. And they would be responsible for monitoring those, maintaining those, where the students can go down there. Anyone can go down there and chalk and create artwork. But there's some, you know, other opportunities within there where we can really do some nice artwork. This is an example of where they did tile mosaics on the stairs. So as this pilot project, we really have the ability to get all of our goals in terms of increasing public art, activating green space, and increasing the perception of safety downtown. And I think within the very near future, I don't think it can really succeed just yet, tell me if I'm right or not, we hope to be announcing our first big grant award towards making this project happen. And so we'll be excited to keep you posted on that. We have a lot of community partners that are interested in this, and I think we'll be a real success, and someone who can all be proud of in our downtown area. So with that, Tony.
So hopefully, you've got a summary of all the hard work that's going on over the last year in the Downtown Alliance. As I said earlier, this is a partnership, all these things can happen. We work very closely with staff, and if you're interested in seeing us pursue those, the funds are available. They're either in the current budget or available in future capital years, but there's nothing kind of hallowed field here. We do have some opportunities for additional partnership as an example. So on a tie these back, these are your goals. This is the City of Fayetteville goal, and this is how we kind of align beneath them. You have a, go first goal, your goal number one, actually, a safe and secure community, and your efforts to reduce this insecurity at prime include improved public perception of the safety throughout the community. So you see these lists of public safety initiatives that we would recommend to you. In some cases, we're going to need your help in strengthening or creating orphaned general policies. In some cases, we're ready to run with it. We're ready to run with the panhandling program that you saw outlined tonight, Downtown Alliance is ready to do that. But the pieces we'll need your help with, if you're so inclined, is to support the panhandling, the comprehensive panhandling. You support that, and if we're not, we're ready to move forward. The new ordering, that's something obviously you would have to do, restriction of giving donated living vehicles in the downtown, changing the police report, and so we can track a panhandling call, working with DOT with the bridges. Those are things that government really is going to have to do, and we would ask for your careful consideration of those, of this entire list of kind of public safety issues that we talked about earlier. We're willing to do our part and a partner with you in those efforts, and we believe it will really help you be successful in your number one goal in the downtown area. Your second goal is diversing the Bible economy. I think you saw a great presentation tonight, and it's been so exciting to see the small business owner downtown. This is Americana down there, Bruce is a great example. People have been there a long time, and fighting the battles of, of being successful in the downtown, and really getting excited about the changes that they believe can make a difference in the environment. We saw a lot of those tonight. And we would ask for your direction to council, to staff members, to go ahead and refine this sign ordinance and bring it back to you, let you all debate and decide if it's good for the downtown. We're here telling you that the applicants to downtown have had, spent a lot of time, and we're very supportive of it. We work very closely with staff. All the things that you saw tonight are possible, even within a historic district, and we believe that they would all promote economic development in the downtown, which we know is a critical goal to be achieved. Your third goal, higher quality building environment, kind of personally attacked with this one, because that building that you saw being torn down is the building that's beside me. So we have a limited number of hundred-year-old buildings that are downtown, and we just lost two of them, and they're here replacing them. And we, both my time as mayor, and us as the government, and us and the staff, we should be embarrassed about losing a hundred-year-old building right there. And we should stand up and say, we're not going to lose any more. So we believe that, at building ordinance, we would ask for your consideration of that. It's probably just that, we work closely, the legal people have, the works in North Carolina, we think, can work here. This is an area that we would ask for partnership. We've done the legwork, we have an ordinance that's ready for staff's input and review, and we would ask for your consideration of that. The same thing with the empty storefront. I think you saw some great visual there, and we did those two kind of prototypes, and we approached Don Corrata in the city. We put things in the windows. We approached the Maxwell Streets property, because we put things in the windows just to show the difference between having something in the window and not having it. So the Downtown Alliance is willing to be kind of the library of that. So we'll keep those materials. We just ask for the city to consider a policy that would encourage the property owners to allow those displays to be in their windows versus empty windows. That's all we're asking, and we think you see a dramatic impact of that. We think that could help tremendously with this third goal. The fourth goal, there's a lot here, this is really the bulk of Eric's presentation, a desirable place to live, work, and replicate. How critical that is for our entire city, for the downtown, especially, as you've mentioned, revitalizing downtown as a focal point of your goals. We think these small achievable projects over the next year, all those, the funds are available, they're either already in the budget or included in the capital budget. They just need the leadership of the city to say, yes, that makes sense, we'd like to have direct staff to come back to you with specific...
Yes, sir. Mr. Ma, when you refer to the fact that the funds are already in the budget or it could be allocated, what budget are you speaking up there? I know it's a special tax district, so are you anticipating that the entire allocation be used?
Now, there's some of those, they're same S D money, some of them, there's some of them just in the city's capital budget. They spend money for...
Yeah, I understand, I understand. That's what I mean, you're saying is it already set aside? I guess I need to see.
Dedicated downtown...
And the parks and rec, as a specific example, they have X amount of dollars in this year's budget for park, for playground...
You know what X amount is?
We...
Two simple parks, equipment?
No, park for playground, but...
Play general?
In general.
You're just asking that it be directed to this property?
And I think once you have the opportunity, if you're sort of defined and direct that, they'll come back and confirm that. But we haven't, we haven't gotten ahead of staff in this, they've been involved in a lot of discussions. They've helped direct where they thought things were reasonable, but not reasonable. This is a lift, that staff says is reasonable, and they believe there is money for that. Now, specifically on that one project that we're talking about, which is the pilot project, this can be really the transformation of a first translate project, and we're willing, and would ask your participation in, to change that small little area in our downtown. This can be the prototype of power for us. And as I mentioned earlier, we don't come just asking for it. And tonight, we heard Eric mention, and we have the steward from the Junior League here tonight, and she's going to stand up and share with us some exciting news of how the community wants to be part of making these things happen.
I have a question for Scott. What was the boundaries of the downtown area?
That is a great question. And it really depends. We have a downtown sunning district, we have a downtown municipal service district, we have a downtown historic district, we have a downtown primary fire district, a downtown secondary fire district, and none of them line up the same way.
Okay.
So one of the challenges that we have and Mr. Loes referred to it in his presentation is to figure out what is the downtown, identify what that is and then make the conscious effort to apply the right regulations and the right incentives to that.
That's going to be very important going forward because we have to really identify what we're trying to improve and what is falls into that area of improvement and I would like to know what that is.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm not prepared to talk about all those different areas tonight, but I will get you all the map that shows all of the variations of that produced and I'll let you know how we are planning to sort of figure out how to define that before we get it on.
Now, this is Councilman Cogan, I'm going to talk to Mike Gibson and get some more details about those capital dollars that he was referring to and then I will get back to Council and give you some more details.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Marie Stewart and I'm the president-elect of the Junior League of Fayetteville. And we are very excited to announce, actually last night, our board decided to allocate $20,000 towards this pilot program for the playground. And we are very eager and excited to see what, what is able to happen in our downtown area.
So we just use that as an example, we believe that community is ready to be supportive of visionary leadership and we look to the council to help provide, to tell us what we would like our downtown to look like and how we can help make that happen. Our commitment from the Downtown Alliance and those of us that live and work and play down here is we'll, we'll carry our part, we'll help find the money, we'll help have the volunteer hours, we can make all of these things happen. And we would just ask for your consideration and any ultimate direction to staff on the ones that you, as the leaders of the city, would like to see happen. Get some more information from staff and make the final decision and let us know the ones that you would like to see us pursue. We appreciate your time tonight and I want to thank all the members of the Downtown Alliance who came tonight to show support and for all of you who care so deeply about downtown. Are there any additional questions, Mayor, anyone that I can, that I can just read?
You want to make sure we get an electronic copy of that, I can't read what I have on there.
Yes, sir. I think staff has, they have an electronic copy, we'll make sure we get a full-size copy of it. Is that protocol there?
Well, it's in the electronic, yeah.
They have it electronically, they can print for you.
Thank you, Mayor Burton.
I was just looking for you for direction in regards to, there's a couple of people that were interested in regards to the sign ordinance and other things that came up. What do you need from us to staff?
If you provide the staff with direction, if you generally pursue what the Downtown Alliance has proposed, then we will move the process of developing these ordinances to take to design guidelines through the process and, and get them for the, get them for the need to. And eventually come to you. It'll be a public process, involve the community, and we'll know what people have.
I mean, I just think in order to keep the ball rolling and the community has spent a lot of time kind of kickstarting this project, first and least, as Councilmember Cogan said, we want to kind of see more in detail, more in depth, so we just need to get staff in direction to bring us more in detail and actually can make those sounds.
Is there consensus on council?
There's a lot of information.
Okay. Sir, I have concerns. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Guys, we'll move to 5.02, which is transit title six, program updates. Welcome, Mr. Andrew Collier.
I, I was just saying, we're out of the room. That means we're going to one, two, three now, are you ready? Let's get this ball rolling.
You know the old army's slogan, three up and wait? I'm getting tired of her, enough and wait.
Before Mr. Andrew starts, is there direction to him to proceed with a public notice and a formal approval for this of the next year? Do you want to hear the presentation?
Stop moving this, Mayor. I don't want to make a bose of that.
Yeah, Mr. McDougal, we have consensus. Okay. Thank you, good presentation.
I did read that, thank you, something, I couldn't read.
All right, this time, Mr. Schufers. Open back up.
Did y'all come here for that presentation?
I just follow that fast presentation with one that might be. We have proposed here for a consolidation of our city board and take a little bit of the council board appointments committee and got their enforcement board, basically to be combining the Board of Appeals, our Rant Board, and our Hacksaw Committee Board under one Board of Appeals. And the reason for that is we've really seen various activity amongst those different boards, I don't know if y'all have this up on your screen, but we're passing around here, it's sort of a summary of the moves occurred this year and.
After receiving this information, is there consensus to ask Mr. Schufers to go forward with the East Coast emergency wars?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. You've got consensus, Mr. Schufers.
Thank you for moving this forward.
Thank you, sir. 5.04 is consideration of city sponsorship runs in the law for 2016.
I agree with this, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you. Did it last yet?
Yeah.
Great program we did, I never imagined.
Do we want, do we want to go ahead and instruct staff to continue this annually or until the program changes? In other words, as long as they're staying in town overnight, I think it's worth following. If they just buzz through here, then I think.
And these are in town and sponsored, sir. Where's not, where's not district?
All right. So that's Mr. McDougal, Mr. Collier, is there consensus?
District seven is not.
All right. That's everyone except Mr. Ryan.
I'm with you.
Any other?
Bring them to them.
Mr. Collier, are you good with that? 5.05 is the building inspection report. Mr. Schufers, is that you?
That's me and, sorry to be dominating this, that's staff. These are the. Mr. Mayor, I'll back it up quickly.
No, we're going to let, we're going to let you do this.
I missed, Mr. Ryan. And, and.
Oh, we're going to get.
Calling up, not getting you the power point in advance of the meeting, but we were actually working on this and it's five o'clock this evening to make sure you have the most up-to-date information about this, the constantly changing situation. And if y'all know, we've had other issues that we consider to be highly important, potentially crisis issues in the community since, certainly not been here, I don't know if it's been here or not, but the UDO, we've managed to take it through many, many amendments to extensive customer interaction and we continue to improve it. Our code enforcement, that was a big issue when I got here, is how to ramp up and create more code enforcement cases and we've been successful in doing that. We've been able to reduce the product code violators from two to 300 every year down to less than 10. So that's how successful our program has been and we think we'll be successful here as well. Now, I want you to, to look at this chart real quickly and I think it summarizes what our situation has been with our electrical inspectors. This is the most that three electrical inspectors can do in a year. That's their, the maximum number of inspectors that get handled. And then when the workload goes above that and that there's more requests than that number right there, then we run into a situation where we fall behind. And that's what's happened to us. We fall in behind, we go along this curve and we don't catch up, the resource is staying the same, we don't catch up until we spend as much time below this line as we do above it, as much area below that line. So that's where we've run into our problem. We've been operating with about 75% staffing per year. Now, why did, have we had to wait that long to fix the staffing issue? Because this is an important issue. If you don't get your electrical inspections done entirely made, if you have other inspections that are waiting on the, the electrical inspection to be conducted, those trades don't get inspected. And likewise, it is an economic development issue. And we've been running as much as the two weeks out in terms of getting inspections done because of the staffing issue. So what was the inspector recruitment issue? Well, I'm going to have our Human Resources Development Director, Barbara Hill, come up here and go over some of the process.
Mr. Schufers. Before you go, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, before you go to the HR. So you said that the average, average workload is about 400 inspections a week, I mean, a year.
Well, that's notes, not, not 400 inspections. That is an example of how many.
Give me, give me the number that you expect them to hit on a weekly basis.
Okay, well, each inspector in the electrical area will go to about 50 stops in a week.
So it'll be 50 inspections a week?
Well, 10, 10, 10 stops a week, but at each one of those stops, there could be as many as many other inspections. Let me give you an example. It's hard to imagine how many inspections go on, but let's say you have a 18-unit apartment complex and you make one stop, but you might be there for three hours because you're going to each of those 18 units. So we would think of that as probably 18 inspections at that one stop. We've, we've used our magnet program to do some calculating of the number of inspections we've been doing on average across all the trades. It's around 20 a day for each inspector. But it varies because you might have, for example, a situation where you make one stop and do 18 inspections, but you might also have a situation where you're looking at 10 T-poles, which are very short inspections, and they only count as one. So we're trying to get you better information about just the magic number of inspections, but don't get too long up on the 400 or 500 on that list because.
Well, I guess where I'm going is you can get an average, right? You have T-pole inspection about very quick, you have the multi-unit, multi-family units that are more intensive.
Yes, sir.
So you should give a derivative average. Are your people that you have currently on payroll hitting those averages or are they before?
Yes, sir. They, they appear to be hitting those averages, but again, it's based on the workload for that particular week. So for example, in the, the plumbing area, we're not as busy. So we might have had six stops in a day with only a 12 inspection. So that might be what a plumber.
I think your biggest issue down here is electrical.
That's exactly right. Electrical is the biggest one.
Right.
Now, let me go through this, I'm probably going to answer many of your questions and if you don't, if I don't, please let me know. With that, I'm going to turn Barbara over to talk about the recruitment issues and how HR really helped us through our, our process of a non-competitive pay plan in an environment where we had to account for salary equity. So we couldn't hire inspectors, new ones, and pay them a lot more than we pay our existing inspectors, nor can we jerk from the fact that our peer communities like Raleigh, Charlotte, have now recovered from the recession and they're in building soon and they're competing with us for the available number of inspectors. Barbara?
Okay, so Mr. Schufers came to HRD, a concern was having difficulty hiring, we didn't feel that our pay plan was competitive. We did go out to market and validated that our range was correct. However, we were still having difficulty because of some of the additional pays that inspectors get, more multiple certifications, which encourage our inspectors to be multi-purpose and that would improve as well. When we adjusted the pay plan according to direction from Mr. Schufers and Deputy Dean and Mr. Small, we came up with a plan that validated and incentivized both our current employees to gain additional certifications and certification levels as well as to encourage new hires to come to us and to, to grow, become more useful, more multi-purpose for the, for the park. Our competition for peer regions has now recovered from the recession to some degree, you're starting to see some increases in wages. We don't want to get into a wage war, somebody's always willing to pay better, but we want to have competitive salaries and keep entertaining the inspectors we have as well as attracting quality micros. So we did comparative pay assessment with peer communities, created a pay for achievement plan which allows our inspectors basically to drive their own wages. So you have a base wage and then you are paid an additional amount for some certifications at some level that again are useful to the park. So if you are looking for, you can basically get yourself a raise by doing more multi-purpose for them. We have two trade tracks, we call them track A and track B. Track A is more of a lower, more basic level one certification. We're looking for these inspectors to be useful in all four trades, but at a more basic certification level, a three certification level. And then the other track, we're looking for two trades for these people again so that they grow into more than one type of inspection and you don't have to wait till the next inspector comes to a trade. We did have to do equity adjustments to exist employees because we didn't want to create any kind of pay equity issues from the building hires. You can see from Mr. Schufers' slide that it was approximately $23,000 was the cost across the board to get everybody up to a level where we wouldn't be doing it currently for compensated as well as any hires. Future equity adjustments, I'm not, you can skip this one, but I'm not real certain how that one is for.
Was it 23,000 total or 23,000 per floor?
Total. That's total across the entire park.
And I'll go, we can go into a little bit more detail with that specifically in the next line, Mayor. This is the fact that the adjustment to the inspectors' pay is putting a pressure on the inspection supervisor. We don't expect them to get, since they're, they're supposed to be the experts in, in a particular trade, we're not really pushing them to add to their certification. We want them to be the expert in that particular trade and in order to do that, we need to make sure that they're paid at a higher rate than the people they supervise. So we are going to come to you with a new initiative in this coming budget year to help them out and, and get an equity issue or proposal there. Then we have our office assistant two positions that we've been using as our permit technicians for a long time. When we went through this process, it was something we had happened with, with city work, that you really need to evaluate whether these inspectors are doing the work that is, is, is a level of an office assistant two, because we think it's more complex work, it's more technical work, so that would be part of the, we've had studies and perhaps provide them with a new. them with a new classification, because it would require some conversation associated with it. So this is what Phil and the HR department created for us, and do you want to go through the numbers?
Yeah, that's okay. I think it's pretty solid.
It is, and as you mentioned, the bottom of our pay range, we looked at it back a couple of years ago when we did the pay and classification study for the entire city, that number was a good number. That's, that's where the bottom of the pay range is for most communities that are peer through. But the problem was, as Phil noted, we have a situation where other communities reward achievement better than we do in terms of getting these certifications. So if you're a track A, that's the four-trade inspector, our goal there is to get you come in, get all four level-one certifications, and you'll be able to do the smaller-scale projects, you can even do an entire senior family house. But the goal is to get folks in here, not make them the super-experts in any particular trade, but have them cover the waterfront, so you can send them out and take care of things like heating and air conditioning change out, because there's both an electrical and a mechanical component with that. So if one person sent us in a mechanical inspector and electrical inspector for that one trip, we send one person, they do it all, it's not that complicated, they move it forward. And we have priority projects like T-poles and, and weather-dependent installations with conduit that's being buried. We send these folks out, and we'll be able to concentrate on these priorities. So if you have one level-one, you get the base pay, and then we expect you to move through quickly to pick up each additional level-one. So if you did that, you would be able to get each additional one to provide you twenty-five hundred dollars, or a total of seventy-five hundred, which gets you to, if you have all four, your pay goes up quite a bit. And you'll see from the next slide how that's comparable to what we're paying many of our own inspectors. Now, track D, the two-trade inspector, you come in, and our goal here is to seek out folks who were mainly doing two trades, so that again, we can send them out and kill two birds with one stone, or we can. So we have a level-two primary, you get that level-two, you're automatically move up to this rate of total pay. You get to level-three, you get an additional seventy-five hundred dollars, getting you to that number. And then if you're able to get that secondary level-two, you're able to add thirty-seven fifty on top of that, so you could get to about fifty-four thousand dollars through that process, and we think that's a pretty good incentive. It's, it's going to be hard for you to see this on the screen, but let me take you to how our existing inspectors and new pay plans work. Let's take a longtime employee, here's Inspector E., worked for us for twenty-three years, has a level-two mechanical, the probationary mechanical three expired in two thousand and ten, so he didn't carry through and, and collects that. In addition to his salary over here, he also receives a longevity pay benefit, and if we wanted to have a secondary trade in plumbing or electrical, so we maximize to making about forty-nine thousand dollars now, he was not eligible because it was more than what we would pay a, a level-two inspector to get the, get that raise. But if he can earn, if he gets to level-three, an additional seventy-five hundred dollars. And then if he gets to secondary-two, he can pick up the thirty-seven fifty. Give you an example from a newer inspector who actually did get a small increment here. This fellow's been with us for less than a year. She's got an electrical of two, she's got a probationary of electrical one, and a probationary of, I mean, building one, a probationary of electrical three. When this probationary one becomes a, a full standard certificate, then he would be eligible to have seventy-five hundred dollars added to his, his pay, and if he's able to get the building up to a level-two, he can add thirty-seven fifty to his pay. So that's what Mr. Hill was talking about, in letting the inspectors have their fakes, their salary fakes in their own hands. So again, sadly, he was very close when we hired him. This is one of the ones we actually hired at about the right level, because we only had to adjust his pay by twenty-nine dollars to, to get him to an equitable situation. But he has the opportunity to continue to adapt and earn more. Exactly. Now, now, here's our problem, we've got that electrical inspector backlog, and we need to address that in two ways. We wanna address it quickly with some interim measures to fix the problems that we are just have right now. So adding interim capacity to what we've done. We hired an off-duty county inspector, he works for us, so he's day off with the county, he also does the Saturday inspection. We have had a code inspector who actually had a level-one electrical certification that had been shelved, and we were able to get it unshelled from the Department of Michigan. He volunteered to come on board and, and work, and so we've reassigned him from, from the housing and code enforcement division to the, the building and plan review division, so that he can help out. And it's been remarkable what adding a full-time level-one inspector's been able to do, because we've been able to reduce that backlog, as you see, from two weeks out to, in a very short period of time, down to we're, we're doing priority inspections in electrical next day, and we're able to do the other ones in, in three to four working days.
What is the difference between priority and other?
I'll, I'll mention that. So priority one is one that you, you need to get to have certain things done after. For example, a T-pole inspection is a priority one, because you have to get the power to the site to be able to start to do all the other work. Another good example is what we call a six-month inspection. When your power's gone off in the building, and then you want to re-energize it, we have to go in and make sure it's safe. Those are ones where we expect to have people waiting to occupy the building, and so we think of that as a priority one. If, if there's conduit in the ground that has to be inspected, then that would also be a priority.
Mr. Schufer, that six-month inspection, does that state gun?
That's a good question. I'll let answer that, Mayor, and I will give you a puffin' off the cup. I think it is, but I will double-check to see if this is a little bit slow or not. That's a good question.
If not, we might need to go in here on that thing.
Then, then we have a reassigned plan examiner, we're called up at plan review, then somebody asks the electrical inspection, sixteen hours a week, and we're in the process, when there's time, we can reassign some of our two-trade staff to go out. So we're expecting, what this is doing is, our capacity now has moved up to here, and that will enable us to catch up where we've been behind because of that. So we're better than those resources. And this is a temporary fix. The longer-term fix is to build some resilience into the program. Let me show you what that looks like.
Since we're on short-term, let me ask you a short-term question. Are you saying, at this point, we're only three to four days down on electrical inspection?
The, the word I got from our dispatch, they were not scheduling into next week this week. So that would continue progress, we expect to get down to where we are with the other ones, which is next day or the, the day after for, for non-priority work.
So your expectation that we can count on our inspections happening within twenty-four to twenty-eight hours?
Yes, sir. The, the standard of service that we've typically been able to do here in the city, despite some obvious hiccups when we have a, a building, is that we do priorities by next day, and then everything else by the day after. That's a pretty good standard. It's, it's not ideal, and clearly, if we're able to do next day, all of them will do that.
Now, what, what are, what can you say is our expectations is when we can see that in place?
Well, let me go through this, and I think you'll, you'll understand.
I am.
All right.
That is being reported.
All right. This is, of course, our other inspector's background issue, and I, I want you to understand that, that the systemic problem we had with pay has had a carryover effect, not just in electrical, but in building, because we've got a vacant building inspector position that was made in two thousand and fourteen, because we promoted someone to our building inspection supervisor. But we didn't have the same impact we had in electrical, because we were able to bring a retired building inspector back to help with that work. Now, if you bring a retired inspector back, it's a limit on the number of hours they can work without jeopardizing their safety time. So we basically used his help to the extent that we could, and fortunately, we were running out of time with him, we were able to recruit a non-building inspector. A little while earlier, using our new pay plan, we started March thirty. So that gentleman's on board, we could have filled it, I could tell you with certainty. We didn't have the new pay plan created by our human resources department, we were unable to recruit that gentleman, because we had the same, five hundred thousand dollars less of salary equity. And you guys have authorized us to use that position, we started mid-year, but because we knew we had a new pay plan coming, we had a lot of time, we said, all right, we'll get away, we're gonna start recruiting there. One of these inspectors, we can have an interview process, we have another one who decided he didn't wanna go into the track A for level-one corrections, so he said, I'm, I'm, I'm actually out, I wanna go, you know, we have a vacancy in the, the two-trade, and I'll be interested, but until then, I'm gonna back out. But we have the, the next person in line that has been interviewed, we're doing some reference checks and other things, but we hope to be able to onboard that person as well. Again, thanks to the pay plan, we've been able to be successful in our recruitment process, and, and that creates, has freed up a logjam that's been occurring since this time last year, both electrical and building.
Sorry, Mr. Schufer, that leaves me to another one.
Okay.
Why did it take a year to fix?
Well, first of all, we had to make sure that we actually understood that it was a pay issue, so creating the problem. Because we would go through the process, we would set up our, our interviews, people would know what our pay ranges were, and we weren't sensitive about what we were offering. But we would get into the process, and there would be an expectation that there would be a negotiation that would lead them to much higher in the pay range than we were able to deliver with our, our salary equity issue. So we have many cases where people were willing to come and look for it, but then they would ask for more money than they could for the pay, and then you'd say, well, let's come here to our other inspectors, well, we can be willing to come for this amount of money, and we can go through the entire process, narrow it down to a cheaper individual, and then say, I'm sorry, I'm not coming for that amount of money. So once we realized that, that we had this issue, we started the, the process with human resources, and they, their initial reaction was, we just got through doing a pay and classification study, and we know that the bottom and top of the range is our reason. And then we got to say, well, I want you to, to take a deeper look into what other communities are paying us, who are, have the qualifications that we're seeking. And when they did that, they said, you're right, we need to have a different structure, we need to have something that, that allows that, that range to stay intact, so at the same time, give them the ability to get that achievement, but if you will, to get there. So it took a lot longer than we would have liked, but the reality is, we've, we've got a, I think, a model approach to, to address that particular issue, that I think other communities have failed to start to use, and it'd be again, if you're, if you're using our model. But we also, our new inspector, Mr. Hider, has been good years, he's probably, he's definitely made, and he's able to retire, and he's resigning effective June one. We've worked with the city manager to start the process. Normally in the city, when we have a vacancy, we wait until the, the person is, is gone from the job before we start to recruit. But this will, enables us to start recruiting right now for this position, and if, if we are able to get someone aboard before this gentleman leaves, we'll still be able to hire that person, and they can be trained by this gentleman. So we've got the provision underway for that. So how do we address it in the long term, in addition to the concern we have about pay? First, resolve the pay issue. How do we, we make sure that we have the ability to create this long-term capacity, where we're up here above where the, the peaks and valleys are? And one thing we talked about with our experience with the Cumberland County was, why don't we have a mutual aid agreement with them for inspectors, just like we did with fire and police? This would give us an opportunity to, to draw on their resources when they're able to give them when we need them, and vice versa. We talked to Hope Mills about this, they're interested as well. We have a race with discussion in Spring Lake, but I'm sure there are other communities in the, in our county that are being interested in this. So if we formalize that agreement, and then we don't have to go through something complex the next time we come around. Plus, we've, this enabled us to identify some temporary resources, as we can count on. We can contract with off-duty inspectors from other jurisdictions. We can bring our code inspector back and enable him to do some inspections, our planning examiners, when they're called up for plan review, can go out and do this. So we've got these temporary resources we can bring into this place, and then we have our two, our two, two-track system with the two-trade inspectors. We're really incentivizing that to happen, so that we can adjust resources to fit the particular needs and address the software. So again, we still continue to improve our process of this resilience. Our inspector office time, we're showing the official dispatch to three trades, and add the fourth one in the next month. Plan examiners are doing the plan review before we have our inspectors. Not only would they have to do the inspections, but they would have to do the plan review in the office. This actually creates a, a good customer service situation, because there's gonna be greater consistency in how those plans are reviewed, because they're being reviewed by two people as opposed to fifteen, number one, and, and number two, the full examiners are in the office, not in the field.
Who are those two plan inspectors?
Tommy Hall and Ray Reed. Each one of them has a level threes in different areas, and so they're sort of a team approach. But for example, Ray's got a level-three in building, Tommy's got a level-three in electrical, and they, they also have level threes in other trades, I don't know which ones, but I would give them all. But they are complementary of, of each other, so that we've got that resource in the office. We're also gonna improve our management, we're gonna put in GPS monitoring soon of our vehicles, so we know where inspectors are, so if someone calls up to dispatch and says, ready now, and there's somebody in my area, we'll be able to look at a map and see that, where that's located, and assign the inspector if they have time to go by and deal with that. The dispatch records have already started to pay us management finances, because we now know that we have inspectors who are less busy than others, and we're gonna use our two-trade approach to assign those inspectors to help out where they're needed. And our online system, Payworks, is, is going to help us as well, because next month, we'll be able to start online inspection scheduling, which will be used by many of our contractors. In fact, our discussion with the home builders, they're extraordinarily interested in this. And then, sometime in July, probably, we're gonna get them, or people will be able to apply for their permits online. The reason why there's a disconnect between scheduling and application is because we have to integrate our credit card acceptance program into the application process. And we didn't, we could've, we could've started this right away with PayPal, and people have to learn a different, a different system, and so we thought we'd just wait to get the credit card in there. So we also wanna continue to work more effectively with customers, the focus group and other meetings, and something very... We've done some very successful with the U D Os. And also, to the lesser extent, with the, our code enforcement program. Because we've really got the board of realtors on our side with regards to our rent program, for example, by reaching out.
What are our expectations for getting the credit card after?
We expect that to happen by July.
Why that long?
Well, yeah, thank you, why that long? But I can set something up alone in an hour.
That's exactly what I said when I heard it would take that long. But we have a vendor that is, we're using for our other credit systems, and that's, I can get IT to-
There are four vendors.
I can get IT to explain that to you, but that is, that's how long it will take us to get the point-of-sale completed in there. But we've been having, I've been with these groups in the past months.
Duane is here, but with active networks, the agreement we have, I think it has to be integrated with active networks and attendance group with CityWorks. And I'll let you speak to it, Duane.
Duane, before you start-
I forgot the name was that day.
Mr. Schiffer, I'm sorry, before you start, I want you to realize that this has been a priority of City Council's mouth for two years in a row. Now, tell us why it's going to take ninety days to do it.
We have to get in the queue for both attendance group, which is dealing with implementation of FaeWorks, and active networks, which the city uses as their online processing vendor. And this particular vendor, at one point in time, was going to go out of the business, or get out of the business. And we were going to have to have a citywide look at what, then we were going to use for online payments. They decided because of their customer base, not to get out of that business. But we have to get in the queue behind all the other customers in order to work on this particular integration. Do you got it? I'm sorry?
So, you sent our R Ts, our Qs for people that provide the service other than those two vendors?
We were going to do that, but we didn't have to because this vendor decided to stay in the business. So, we're going to use the same vendor that the city is going to use. That would be a huge undertaking to go out and change all the processing, online payment processes for the entire city. So, you don't have to do that now. We're going to continue to use active networks. They would now integrate with attendance group. So, the timing is that, you've got to marry up two different vendors, time schedules, to create one holistic solution, which is the online payments.
And I think the issue is, it's not as simple as just, and again, I'm not a, I'm not a-
It's just an integration.
But it's not as easy as just accepting a payment online. The time that it will take is the issue of integrating the point-of-sale system with CityWorks or with FaeWorks.
They need an audit.
That's the issue, and that will take, they're telling us about thirty additional days to do that.
Miss Schuster?
Yeah. Okay, so my question is, you know, we're hearing that it's going to take ninety days, we can't negotiate, got it. So, can we just get a PayPal account for the, for the next ninety days and do that? And then when we can switch it back over? Because any contractor out there, when we put a PayPal thing up there, and they don't know what it is, but they know they can get their stuff done quicker, they're going to find out where PayPal account is real quick. And there's a teenager that can set it up for them.
I mean, I'm sure I'm not the only one that runs a campaign website that you contribute online. I mean, that was set up literally in and out.
I mean, so, is, is that really the issue that for us to set payments is that? Can we just do a PayPal account temporarily?
We can look into the PayPal account as well. There's still some backend processing that, from a finance standpoint, they're going to have to look at and marry on the backend.
Okay, but, I mean, but we can set up a PayPal account, and then, but is there anything that it won't go through the system to get to where it needs to be? The work order is what I'm asking. Have we got something that needs to be done on FaeWorks to get it through PayPal?
Yes, there's still some integration that we would have to work through. So, FaeWorks, they're to work with PayPal.
That's a dangerous one. So, FaeWorks is not ready for its pay payment, is what I'm kind of carrying.
Exactly, that integration has to marry with active networks.
FaeWorks is not ready.
Right, and then we run into a customer service issue that Mr. Schiffer spoke of, where you, just as soon as you gave one stood up, now when it feels bad, you're coming back using the long-term solution. So, now you have the customer-
I understand, I'm understanding all that, and I really want y'all to understand that. I know that y'all are doing a great job, and, Mr. Schiffer, if you could answer the phone to everybody that calls, we wouldn't be sitting here having this problem. And, but you can't be everywhere, and you have saved the customer service that we do have. And I applaud you for everything that you're doing with FaeWorks. But the problem is, people are having a hard time getting these permits. And if you look at the slope, it is, the workload goes up, and then everybody gets so aggravated, then there's no more workload. I mean, economic development right there is in our face. So, when money isn't coming to my bank account in my business, and you tell me it's going to take me ninety days to get my money, I'm knocking on somebody's door to figure out how long I'm going to get that money. So, I'm thinking ninety days, we can do something, even if it doesn't integrate in there, at least get the money and move the process. That's just all I have. Does that make sense?
Small T, they can throw them out.
Sort of the rest. All this staff is to come back with a system for point-of-sale and then nothing.
Well, you're going to have it in ninety days.
That's already done. Mary, for a team?
I just want to kind of just bring this back to me. I know we're all kind of frustrated because it's been a problem that's been going on for a while. But I don't really support doing band-aid to the problem. I mean, it's going to cost so much time and energy to reroute things just for ninety days for us just to wait for a full system. So, I remember when we were, and I know this is kind of off-topic, I was telling the council member, right? But even when we were meeting at P W C, Kathy, we were both concerned about why they still can't take credit cards from the drive-through. So, it's not that simple as we're beating up the city staff of why they can't get something down. Yeah, so, all I'm just saying is, all I'm trying to say, instead of trying to have staff spring their wheels for just a temporary fix for ninety days, that energy you can use is to work on what the permanent fix is going to be. That would be my support.
Permanent fix is already in work.
Right, within ninety days.
Yeah, it's already in work.
Yeah, I understand, that's a waste of money, and it's not being efficient if we're going to put together a PayPal account for ninety days, then to tell the customer, oh, we're not on PayPal, we're on this for ninety days.
Depending upon where you pay. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you can have a merchant account, you can have a merchant account. You know, depending on where you're at, you get a merchant account, you don't go through nobody. I mean, you just put that button up on your webpage, and bam.
But they're talking about the connections from the other end, not just the-
I'm trying to tell you, you don't have to do any of that. I've, I've got a merchant account, trust me. It's, it's about an hour.
But when you're running all these different systems, all these different systems to connect?
Mr. Wright, and Mr. Golden, and Ms. Google. Sorry, I opened that can of worms.
Oh, no, Mary. It's okay.
I yield my time, Mr. Mayor, COVID.
Well, I mean, I guess what I need clarity on, is it the payment piece that's, that's not operable? Or, or do you have the rest of it ready to go with the exception of the payment piece?
It's a combination.
Okay, so, we're not ready all together. If you fix the payment piece today, the system is not ready.
Exactly, because there's still going to be some backend, yes, there's still backend processing that's going to have to be placed. My understanding, Scott, because it's much more challenging than I can, when you, when you have a vendor, when there's multiple payments, it's not just, you know, one, one payment is a thousand dollars, and say, put it on PayPal. But it would be expected there's multiple payments, and maybe two fifty for this, three hundred for this, forty for this.
But it's still all merchant processes, just like the credit cards, right? You've got a thousand in the bachelor, you've got a hundred in the-
Right, but you simply have to reconcile that, reconcile that on the backend.
So, it's not just as simple as, I'm going to pay this bill. What happens is, after that bill gets paid, it then starts another process.
That's the part that's not working.
And that's the process, that's the part where it's not.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, if you go ahead and get a PayPal account, they bring it, if you get the order, and that order can be taken to wherever it needs to be done.
Well, we want to be able to move it through the system. No, no, it won't. If it's a standalone PayPal account, that's it is-
Someone needs to manually do that.
Correct. But there will be nobody talking to anybody, and that's where we get into trouble, is when people talk to customers, so.
Miss Smallton, what if I was to suggest that we provide counsel a little bit more, and maybe make a difference for our issue?
Well, I think maybe the point that the council is trying to tell staff, Ms. Smalltony-
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer, is that this is an important issue for us, and this is the second year in a row that it's been on our priority list. And we would hope that the staff would give it the same consideration that the council has in making sure that it remains a priority.
And it certainly is. And I think that's what Mr. Campbell was saying, is that we have to be able to work through, and when he talks about backend things, he's also talking about the financial system in general, that, and as well as how to move that permit application through the process.
Miss Smallton.
Miss Smallton, that don't mean jack to that contractor that's out there.
But it may not, but-
Yeah, but it means something to us in the long run, and it has to get done. Because y'all are going to have to do it, that's all we say.
Exactly, we get that.
Don't let them keep calling me.
Yeah, well, what we get, what would be worse is to launch something-
Well, they let you shop.
They saw us re-. Miss Smalltony?
Yes, sir.
Is our expectation that this will be up and running and running properly in ninety days?
That's what I was saying.
Ninety days.
Ninety days, that's what we're talking about.
Man, I could bill two USAs.
So, do we hold accountable at the end of ninety days if it's not up and running?
Kathy, just-
I know why I would hold it.
I just heard somebody told the council.
Ninety days. I will report back, I will give updates periodically, Miss Smalltony.
I mean, to me, I'm less concerned with the logistics of it as to the results of it. Y'all are going to spend money to fix this problem, and it's not fixed for whatever reason. So, at some point, excuses run out. Okay, it's been two years. I would say, let's set a hard deadline, and if it's not done, then we deal with it, well, on our job. We can't do our job and y'all's job. I don't care about why it's not working. I'm just saying it's been two years, and so, the next day we get, we expect it to be met, I do. So, we need, we need to deal with it the way that we deal with it.
All right, and when you were talking about, you were talking about the new permitting program workforce.
From the time this council said, we want this to be a functionable department to, right now, where we're still having this conversation, anything in between those two timelines, it's imperative.
I understand, sir.
Well, ninety days, we want to have a T O M system that operates, that's my understanding.
And that stands for point-of-sale, please, please understand, yes, yes, please. But let me get to the current status. We've got the new building inspector, started March thirty, four trade inspectors start next week. Selectable inspectors, the recruitment period is over. We have several well-qualified candidates. We expect a successful onboarding of an employee in that position by the end of May. We have another four trade inspectors to interview next week. We are again expecting a successful onboarding by mid-May. Building inspector supervisor, move forward to recruitment over higher that position right now. As far as our backlog, select will have a priority right now this week, Monday. Next day, priority, another inspection this week, building, mechanical, plumbing, next day. FaeWorks, phase two, this public portal we've been talking about, where people, right now, they're getting emails. Phase one, enable them to get emails when there's an inspector involved. Phase two, opens up the process to the contractors where they can log in, and they can see exactly where their job is at any one point in time. So, that is going to be real time, that's going to be there, that's happening in May. And our online scheduling also will happen in May. At phase three, which is the last piece that we've been talking about, point-of-sale integration with CityWorks is expected to happen July one.
That's a hundred and twenty days.
They're committed to ninety, so.
All right, the, I'm committed to July one because that's what's on my supply. But at any rate, I could say July thirty-first, but I'm in line. Device connectivity, that's, that's been an issue that you've been heard about from the inspector, and we've done a small sample with the iPads and other devices, and more samples will be taken. But connectivity is available. We have heard about long queue, phone queues, but we have temporary staffing to help the dispatcher with that. Later in, in May, we're going to get the call center put in, which will enable us to actually track the calls from a customer service channel. So, you know how when you, you call up and you get a recording as you're going through a line banking or something like that? It says, banking over the phone, it says, just maybe monitor following, we should, we'll have that ability to make sure that our dispatchers are being courteous and doing what they're supposed to do. But we think their workload is going to go down immensely when we have online scheduling. And again, that's going to be happening soon. So, here's what I think you've all been looking for, is sort of the whole picture about when things happen. Four trade inspectors, recruitment, onboard. The electrical inspectors, recruitment, closing four, six, expect to have that person onboard, even the months up here. Mark, April, May, June, and July. Technological enhancements, phase one, FaeWorks, in effect now. Phase two, in May, public portal and online inspection request. Phase three, July one, call center, early May installation. Then, as far as procedures changing, we've got the call-in dispatch going over the three trades now. All trades will happen when we have that online thing working out, and their workload gets to what they can manage. Online dispatch, that's going to be part of the FaeWorks phase two. And then last, ultimately, we'll get our GPS systems into the trucks of our leg name and implement it there so that we can have that management tool available to us. So, that's the last slide in this presentation, a good summary of the timeline. You can ask the sons or your constituents, and you can call me if you need to.
Mr. Schiffer, just a question, all the inspectors have city phones?
They have, they are issued a city cell phone, just sorry.
Why don't we just activate the service on the cell phones and be able to track them, rather than investing in GPS units toward the vehicles?
Right, and, and there is a reason for that. That was my initial thought, that we would use the phones for the GPS tracking. But we have a very inexpensive solution that can go into the truck that will enable us to do a bit better job. I will, I do not know all the technical stuff, and sadly, Duane is not in here to help with that. But I'll get you more information about why we've been putting this, I think, a hundred-dollar device in each truck that will tie into a-
Then there's a monthly fee for the hundred-dollar device?
I need to get you the information on it. Duane, GPS monitoring that Jennifer really was talking about, it's a small device, plugs into the truck, does it require any-
Yeah, it's a, automatically, you have to look at it.
Yep. So, do you carry, why do you carry a monthly cost?
There is, I do carry a monthly cost. We work with Verizon to get that cost down typically as anywhere, two, three, seven, or ten dollars a month per, per device.
How many do we need?
We will need seventeen.
And how much is it to turn on the GPS piece on the phone and track it that way? On their city-issued cellphone, if you turn it on or off?
Yeah, that you can, you can turn that on, but it depends on what you're, what you're trying to track, the lag time, or you're looking at routes and things of that nature. Because what you move on, once on your phone, once you move from one location to the next, it doesn't give you that history.
Right.
It just says that, you know, you've been here for ten minutes, but if you're looking at it an hour later, it's not going to give you that history. Whereas with the automatic vehicle locator, you can look at the history and do trim, and do some trimming analysis.
It also tells you the time to get in.
Well, it tells you how long they were at that particular location, so.
So, it's like a hand operation.
Yes, exactly. And that's what we're using, that same technology we're using in, uh, police cars and.
That you, Mr. Schiffer. Counsel, trailers and RVs is next, item five point zero six. Mr. Schiffer, I think we already took action on this, didn't we?
Well, here's what happened, Mayor. We, uh, we came to you with a code amendment to further restrict trailers in front yard. And also, we're going to pursue that. And so that's a technical error in my report to you. But I did say that you took action to do not regulate the haul utility, rather. You actually did not. You just told us not to proceed with the ordinance we had for you. Then later on, Mr. Mo came back and said, well, not only should haul utility trailers go into these locations, but what about, uh, boat trailers? And, and council agreed that that was probably something for us to pursue. Then we were getting ready to prepare our ordinance and we enforced that somebody had a big RV in their yard. And somebody called up to really start to touch on this and saying, a council member said that we were not regulating these things anymore. So what, what's going on? And at that point in time, I said, look, I don't want to come in here and bring up a boat trailer for the council and then say, well, by the way, when you did the RVs and everything else. So I wanted to come back here and get your instruction with regard to what you would like to be regulated and, and, and then for us to address it all in one piece. In the meanwhile, I told my staff to stop enforcing our regulations until we had this direction for you.
I want to call Mr. Mo, but I got a question for you. Are there boats in driveways without them being on trailers?
Um, that's a good question. There could be. I mean, we have, our, our crews don't have wheels.
Mr. Mo.
I was approached last year since some other neighbors about, it started out as single axle, small boat trailer in driveways, not, not in front yards. You like give it grass or anything or on the, you know, so, or side yard. And there were some pictures, you know, I've taken some off the, were they blue or whatever? And so then when council met at the February board session, that was the only thing addressed was small boats. You know, we weren't talking about anything else. And the majority of council said, yeah, let's go ahead and allow, you know, single axle trailers for small boats only, driveways. Because they're already allowed in backyards, but you know, some backyard you can't do anything, you know, just photography or, or zero line lines, whatever, whatever reason it is.
Exactly.
And so then, um, I went back to the U D O, um, you know, that chapter thirty dash four dash B, you know. And then it was self paragraph T, and then underneath there's one, two, three. And when I read the applicability, um, the current, current U D O, it said it was standards, shovel trailer trucks with more than two axles or that exceed thirteen thousand pounds of gross weight, your vehicle weight weight. It also applies to trailers with two or more, more than one axle. So when I went through the presentation, we've got a bunch of pictures that have trailers, recreation vehicles, other things with more than one axle. I'm like, well, that's always banging and that's not even what council discussed. It was a simple, a single, small boat, uh, single axle trailer. And that, that was, and council said, yes, go ahead and, you know, bring us back in ordinance to allow that, nothing else. And so that's when I got a little confused going through the presentation, as I, a big old fertilizer tractor, that's a good picture. But it's already, it's already out. It's already not authorized.
It is, Mr. Mo, and I'm, I'm not trying to be problematic. I mean, we understood your direction pretty good. But the, the problem we ran into was that we were hearing from citizens who thought that some council members had felt this more inclusive than what our understanding was. I wouldn't admit it with all of that, then, then we figured we'd better come back to you. Now, if, if, if this consensus is this group that, that we are talking about trailers that are single axle in nature, whether they are utility trailers for somebody's landscape supply or, or trailers to transport boat, people or jet skis or, or other things, uh, ATV or what have you, and, and we're talking about that, if that's all you need, I'm through with my presentation. And I can go home and we don't need to go to the new slide.
And I think that was the only thing we talked about was single. Oh, no, that was great. It was worth, you know, wait a couple of weeks to make sure we get it, right? So, you know, split up staff and get a lot of, you know, excess work. But when I went back to the minutes, it was very specific. It said, you know, single small boat trailer. A boat out of a small boat trailer. But I think something would definitely want to have in there was that for it to be stored, if it's going to be stored in the driveway or the side yard and back though, then the trailer needs a device. You know, it can't, can't be like a junk car, which we already have, but it's upon rocks and stuff. That's already against the ordinance. But this is a, you know, enforcement is one thing. But, I mean, that's how I understood it. It was simply for small boats. And keep eliminating all those big stuff? I mean, that's already unauthorized.
No, I mean, I guess I'm just a little concerned with how far do we go? I mean, you know, we started out with the, with the single axle trailers and, you know, then now we went to boat trailers and now we've got RVs wrapped in here. I mean, how much of that is up to the neighborhood covenants versus the city setting? Some areas that might fit into what that neighborhood wants. And then, I mean, but where, where do we go next? Do we go to vans? Do we go to pickup trucks? I mean, how does it, where do we stop?
Get four cars in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, now, there's ordinances for abundances and licenses and, and keeping it in an acceptable way. But I'm just, I just don't know where we, where we.
Well, our ordinance will not be a substitute for private deed covenants that deal with what you can put in, in your front yard. And, and we don't enforce them, maybe more restricted than what our, our regulations are or less restricted. We don't enforce either one. We only enforce what our rules are. So, um, we're not the enforcement mechanism for private, uh, covenants. But that's a good point. A lot of times you have neighbors who could say, yeah, this is our expectation for, for our, our neighborhood. And they have those covenants and they are able to enforce it themselves. But that's not something we did. Now, I think I've got the direction I need from you with regard to, to this. I'm getting confused because we're getting, we're hearing from, uh, from, uh, from your constituents who felt that this was applied more broadly than we thought it would. And if it doesn't, I'm through with my presentation and, uh, I probably will go ahead.
Counsel, if you know, we do have some folks here that are here for this and have been waiting patiently. Just very briefly.
Okay, real quick, I've been here since seventy-two. I've been paying taxes here since seventy-three and I've been in my house since seventy-seven. Now, I started out with an RV when I came back from Alaska, because I retired military. All right, it was a twenty-three footer and it fit alongside my house. Then I went to a twenty-six footer and it still fits alongside my house. But it's not my fault that the manufacturer went from seven feet to nine feet. And then he went from ten feet tall to twelve feet tall so we could have such air conditioning, like my two fourteen does. But my two fourteen ain't a derelict. And it's two axle. Yeah, it's thirty-five feet long. Now, would you like me to go to my neighbor and say, I want you to take that wall down so I can move my trailer into my backyard? It's in my driveway. I have two driveways. It's not hurting anybody. It's inside my gate, which goes across both driveways. And my opinion, I pay taxes on it. I pay taxes on the house and I've been doing it all these years. And somebody coming along telling me I can't have one, after all these years, it's boats. Okay? Now, you want people like me to stay here to pay your taxes and aren't in the newspaper every January? Then you give up a little bit. Too much government is garbage. I didn't spend my life going to combat five freaking times. And then come back disabled for somebody back here to prove that we were living in Russia. Okay? Now, if you've got a problem with that, you can put all the things you want in my mailbox. And when it gets full, I'll tell you to come pick up the trailer. Now, I'm paying to store it and that's ridiculous.
And we pay taxes on it.
And if, if that's the case, I'm going to move it to whole county to store it. And I'm not paying Commonwealth County taxes or payable taxes on it because it's not in Commonwealth County. Do I make myself clear? Do you understand?
Yes, sir. And first of all, let me thank you for your service.
And Mr. Doolberry has been working with me. And he's the one that told me I could bring it on. Now, my last man, I'm both retired, we travel. I don't see why I should be paying for a storage lot when we're going two hundred days a year.
Right.
So I make myself clear.
All right, let, let me stop you because don't shoot the message you're here. He is, uh, he.
No, but the council went and did it. Number one, you do something down here, you want to know the right way? You take and you send a letter to every person that owns an RV. You don't put it in a freaking newspaper. I was on a cruise when I got a notice in the mailbox back in two thousand and eleven. When I got home, I was already ten days over the time I had to move my trailer. I called Mr. Doolberry. He said, go ahead and take care of it. That's not the way to do it. That's not the way to do it. That's not the way I did it with my four hundred and eighty-four men. If I had something to say, each one of them got a letter. I didn't say, oh, it's on the bulletin board.
Thank, thank you, sir. Thank you for your comment.
All right. So I want to know, I'm bringing my trailer home one minute. I'm tired of paying storage. It's a thirty-five footer, three slides, and it's got double axle.
Yes, sir.
It's in my driveway.
It'll be a violation.
Well, then we got a problem.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comment.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. How long has this ordinance been put into motion and how long has that been going on?
Well, I think we initiated it right after the first year, if I remember right.
No.
No, no, two thousand and nine-ish, eight thousand days.
When we went on that cruise, right.
It was a previous, I was on that council when I voted against it.
See, we weren't even in here. We weren't even here to vote or anything. If you had a public voting, then why didn't you give us that opportunity to vote? We're, we're U S citizens.
It was two thousand and eight.
I think this is, a majority of us were not here when that happened. But I think the good part about this is you started a conversation that we could sit and discuss about it.
I want to know something. If it's citywide, then why do I see a Fayetteville cop with a trailer in his driveway over on, what road is that?
Stacy Reaver.
Stacy Reaver. And I told Mr. Doolberry about it. If you're going to make me move mine, then that cop better move his.
He's been fighting this thing and he's been getting all your, all his letters and he's not moved his.
That's right. That cop has not moved his in all these years. Now, you tell me, you work for the city, you get a freebie?
Absolutely not.
All right. Then I want to know why that trailer ain't moved.
If it's because he's back so far on your public road, then that's not an excuse.
Well, I think we've started the conversation and we have a lot of things that we need to research and I'm sure that we will get, you know.
And I've already called the associations I belong to, Good Sam's, K O A, Coast to Coast, and they're all going to be sending letters. Because they said that's a freedom that we have a right to park. Just because I get a little extra money in my pocket and I could buy something, there's no reason for somebody to infringe upon my rights to own it. Okay?
Thank you. I make three comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Briefly, sir.
I kind of feel in, get in the same situation. I have a thirty-five foot motor coach and of course, I'm in compliance with your ordinances, I moved it. I paid over three thousand dollars a year in taxes for that motor coach to the city and county. But yet now I'm having to pay to park my motor coach outside the city. If we're not going to be allowed to park our property, we're paying taxes on it in the city. Should we not? We've got to get some tax relief. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, uh, what do y'all park? If you don't park along the front street.
No, it's in my driveway.
It's not even on the street.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not on the grass.
No, I don't park on my grass. My, my.
And I mean, you got a pad, you got a pad.
You can probably look at my yard. They could probably look at my house. And then you're telling me I park my trailer. You look at the houses around me. They're dunks and nobody does anything about it. You want to beautify Fayetteville? Fix the houses up.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get some clarity. I just, the ordinance was long before us and we are having to kind of fix something. Maybe they had one that, um, you know, he parked it up beside his house. He had a pad and he.
But, but see, the new trailers are lighter and they're smaller. They do not, I mean, the houses in Ponte Rosa are only so far apart. I had to take my new.
We're in Old Ponte Rosa. And we have, in Old Ponte Rosa, we have fountains, which we were protecting our trailers and everything.
And I had to have.
Do all y'all live in Ponte Rosa?
Yes.
Y'all are all there.
Right.
I'm jealous. I've been trying to get my husband to get our, so I'm jealous.
Mr. Mayor. Let's, let's, uh, you know, relook this. It happened in two thousand and eight. We got a new council. Let's kind of relook the situation based upon their circumstances to see if this is something that's, um, uh, that's reasonable for the citizen, for the city. We could do that and, uh, we'll, we'll get back with you guys when you're here. You know, we appreciate you coming and addressing.
On the other side of Ponte Rosa, you look at what side of the.
On the other side of Pride. Not near Ponte Rosa.
Old Ponte Rosa. Same thing goes, same thing goes right through Old Ponte Rosa. Go around this side by tightening.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that my dish?
Yeah, you look familiar, council. You go around the neighborhood.
All right. So council, is it consensus we want to get Small Tony to, uh, take another?
Well, you come by our house, you put the fine on it. You're trying to leave it in the yard now, on the driveway.
Council, consensus for Ms. Small Tony, get Small Tony.
Yes.
I asked the earlier guys about small boats only, because we were trying to loosen the standard a little bit. But now this is.
No, you're, you're loosening it for some people, but you're not loosening it for everybody. And that means you are.
Okay.
We hear you, man.
You're focusing your, your straight line. When we teach kids, we teach kids all of it, not the handicap, not the, uh, categorically gifted. You teach the whole class. That's the way we are. We're all that class.
I appreciate the comments, you know, and I remember when we went through in two thousand and eight, we had a very vocal group that were for it. A very vocal group that were against it. And this went on for like six months. It wasn't a simple. The council voted seven to three and I was one of three that voted against it. A person contacted me, asked for a small boat. So I, I went in with the person. You never contacted me or one of your council members. You could have had your issue added to the side of it, but you didn't. So I was representing the person that called me, asking about small boats. So it wasn't double standard. You know, if you want something, come, come talk to us and we work together.
Well, I'm glad we can, I just want y'all to know that it is an issue for us.
Zero seven was your item.
And we need y'all, right?
Thank you.
I guess, when you did that.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, um, those folks waited about two hours.
Good night.
Good night.
Drive safe.
Thank you, man.
Mr. Mo, go ahead, sir.
Okay, um, what, this is a request. I called it an audit. It probably might be a review, might be better. Because back last year when we adopted the budget, you know, about ninety-two percent of the recent pack height was supposed to go for public safety. And there was a variety of things. Here we got some, we need brass investor, payers, attorney for the three IT, who's a dispatcher, forensic technician, property evidence, technician, installation technician, supply person, a variety number of either lateral hires or new sworn, new sworn officers. And then, um, there was thirty-three additional full-size sedans with camera. I know we just recently authorized the purchase of those minus the cameras. There was another four mid-size sedans, two cargo vans, twenty refurbished police cars, give some money for the crime lab, cross street district, office leasing, additional equipment. And then I believe we took. And then I believe we took three hundred fifty one-time funding to help jumpstart the swimming pool. And some of the question is, if, uh, when we go through the budget process, you know, I think we should have a breakout or, of, say, okay, of this three point seven-ish million dollars that was supposed to go to public safety this current fiscal year, how much has been spent? You know, um, and then how much has not been spent or underspent, and that way, you know, we can kind of see. I mean, that's what it's supposed to go for. And I thought of, you know, an audit of the recent tax increases, we gotta do an audit department or audit person here, but I don't, I don't think audit's the proper word. It's more just, can we get a breakdown of, you know, how that, uh, three cent? Sure, sure, as part of the, you know, budget discussion, so we don't need a separate meeting of it, just have that a breakout, say, ooh, if it was public safety, just itemize based on, you know, all the issues. And most of that stuff was all in that, the three, um, you know, we had a chart that had like a four cents or, you know, four point eight, a three, and then eight, and then a three cent. Which was funded, what was not, and then maybe just get a readout of what was actually bought, what wasn't. You know, some personnel were on different timelines and stuff like that, and there were some rejected costs.
But you all had focused entirely on the lease? Well, I think there were other parts of the tax rate.
Well, there, there was, there was, uh-
Two inspectors.
Yeah, like some inspectors, you know, economic development, but, um, I think that part was pretty much, it was more, since we were out in the, in the public saying, hey, ninety-two percent of this is going for public safety. You know, and three, four, pretty much on the public safety, and hopefully it comes up to close to ninety-two percent.
Does that sound like it'd be hard to pull together?
I don't think so.
Can you have it, can you have it in the national meeting?
I think so, we should be able to.
So we don't have to wait?
You don't think so?
Yeah.
The thing is, this went into your regular expenditures, it's not like we had a grant where we set up separate cost centers to track certain expenditures. So if you want it done and you want it done right, that means they've got to go transaction by transaction. A lot of things at this point are encumbered, but not received.
Okay, well, encumbered is good, like the cards.
You know what I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of details there, it's not, it's not like we said, this is this pot of money, let's keep it separate. And we all, we wanna know how to account for it, it became a part of the general revenues and the general expenditures, because it's general fund taxes. So it, uh, it's not, it's not like it was kept in a separate account, a separate cost center, a separate sub ledger, there was no, there was no design at the onset to say we have an expectation that we have to be able to account for these dollars going forward. It's like if somebody said, now, how much have we spent in the phase five annexation area? That would be impossible to answer because that's now a part, it's been a part of the city for so long, it's just, you know, it's with all the other regular expenditures.
Mr. Colvin, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I guess, phase five goes back several years.
Right.
This was just done last year.
It's, it's not as, it's not as big as that.
So basically, three cents equates to how many dollars? What was it, uh, approximately, about four million dollars?
Yep, it was four point one.
Okay, so, so basically, if you take, okay, we received the extra four million dollars into our general fund account and we've spent X amount of dollars on these top three priorities, that will tell us where we are.
Right, and what I'm, yes, what I'm saying is, it's, it's, it's not as easy to say, you know, the police officers. Well, which one of the many police officers that were hired was, was the new one?
Well, that probably would have used the-
So you'd have to go, it's not, it's not an easy question to answer.
Yeah, if we started at three ninety-nine and our expectations are we hired forty or forty-seven.
But you, you go like this- But you go like this, your staffing levels go like this throughout the year. You don't, you don't go, when we were, it's like when we were talking about where are we in filling all these positions? We're not filling a bowl, we're filling a funnel, because you always had that trickle at the bottom.
Okay.
So when you're talking about those expenditures for the police officers, at one point we may have been at three ninety-nine and hired ten, but then we dropped that down again.
But don't, don't we overhire for that reason? Don't, isn't there an allocation to overhire?
We did do some overhires, but what I'm saying is, you're, you know, do we say, okay, this, you know, police officer A was one hired to be, um, you know, the new staffer. So every dollar we spent, police officer A, we'll count him as using the new money, but you might have had ten other people leave. So it's just, you know, how do you now go back and say, this, this officer is being paid with the new money, or what's just-
So can you tell me which fif- which fifteen officers are being funded by the GCC grant?
The cops, the cops grant?
Right.
Yes, because that is money that we have to separately allocate, they're in a separate cost center, because we have to be able to report that.
So what do you do when this happens with that grant?
When an officer is hired in, he's assigned to that grant. They're specifically assigned, and we have to-
So when he leaves that money stays-
When we, when we file a, a request for reimbursement from the grant, we only can run the expenditures for those officers assigned to the grant. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Mr. Melvin?
So, I mean, that's, that's the question, is how do, how do we, how do we account for that?
I'll work on it.
You know, what number do we count?
Well, if we take away the, the officers-
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wright.
Yeah.
You go ahead, then, Mr. Wright.
In fact, even I have an, I have an itemized list of stuff that is in the budget, in the back of the budget, it says additional, there's specific vehicles. Now, that's, that should be easy at that point, minus the officers.
Yeah, it's, the personnel is the, is the hardest thing to answer, because like I said, you've got that one to wait for.
Well, like the three, you know, ones that were specific for the police or minus, yeah, this was what I have to do, I come up with, I mean, positions that we advantage, and these dollars came out of the, uh-
And, and, yeah, there were adjustments made, I don't know what is wrong. There were adjustments made on timing, on hiring for the support position, because you wanted more officers early, not. So some of these support positions were delayed. There was the adoption tax package, there was the rise, I remember that.
That's how, that's what you wanna know, how was three point, whatever sense that is, was spent today?
Uh, hang on, Mr. Colvin, Mr. Wright, that's what you want to know.
Thanks for what they're asking.
Well, I think that we've kind of, uh, going around and circling a little bit, but, you know, it's not an audit, but it's a, it's a request to, uh, update money's allocated. But if you want a specific item line number or you want a general account of that money. She, because she said it's too difficult to get a specific line item, so you, you know, what, what do you want?
Right, um- I mean, I think we can, the police department and, uh, Kristoff has given the staffing update on which of the positions are filled and where they are in filling the position. Is that part of the question?
That's more accurate to look at.
We can, you know, we can, we can provide you a status on all of the positions that were added.
And it would cause-
Then, you know, you know-
Part of the three IT, what has been spent.
No, it's, it's the what has been spent part that gets, where it gets difficult, because then is it, what did you spend beyond what was in the original? You know, it's, there's just so many variables with payroll, especially when you have the officers, like I said, how do you go?
So I think we, we, I think we probably need to resolve this offline, but I did, if I could, uh, if you have hired ten police officers, um, this year, as a result of the tax rate increase, right, and revenue, and then you ought to be able to say he has spent X number of dollars since when it was in October when they actually came online and figured out, well, generally speaking, how much money has been expended bringing those ten officers on?
I mean, but then you've got all this, uh, people that came up, so I don't-
Well, the question is, really, how much have you spent?
So I don't, I don't, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know, how do we identify, this is a person hired with the new three cent tax.
What, by that, by that number of, 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 yeah.
You know what I mean? I don't wanna, I, I want everybody to be clear, the question that we're answering, because, you know, we could interpret it one way and it's not your interest, and then, you know, you say, oh, you gave us bad numbers and we're not intending to, but it's just not an easy answer.
Mr. Colvin? Well, I think, I think what, what, what helps me, if, if we take that roughly four million dollars was brought in in the new taxes and ninety-two percent was for public safety, that's about three point six million dollars, okay? So what I'm saying is, is that you should be able to back into those expenses by saying if an extra three point six million dollars has been directed for public safety.
Right.
Okay, so-
That, that happened, I can, I can absolutely tell you, that went to their budget.
All right, so then now, 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 now that we've confirmed that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, now that we've confirmed that, you're just saying that you don't know how the three point six has been spent as a further breakdown? Because some of that led to people-
In actuality, as you go through, if you say, okay, to actually say, how was, how were those dollars spent? They became a part, that three point seven million dollars became a part of the police department's operating budget.
Oh, okay.
So what, what we can do is say, all the positions that were added, what is the status of those positions?
All cars that were bought, that weren't scheduled.
I could, we can say, okay, there were forty-one new vehicles, they're all, you know, three that were received and thirty-seven are on order. Is that, are you looking more for a status of where we are in those plans?
Yeah, that's why I thought audit was the wrong, you know, when I started thinking, it's really an audit, yeah, it's not an audit.
That's right.
The status of all the positions that we had authorized as much.
We can, that, that is a, that is an answerable question.
That's what we want.
Yeah.
That is an equipment level, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we want.
I think so.
That sounds, that sounds understandable.
Okay, wait, so-
Emailing, call us, right.
So where, where are the positions in terms of being filled and the equipment has it been ordered, where is it? You're not looking necessarily for dollars spent, that you're looking for the status of the planned expenditure.
Correct, right, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and thank you, Tracy, while you're pulling that, I'd like to know staffing positions at the police department also.
The information, an update from Kristoff and the chief.
From where we were on July one to where we are now as far as filled positions.
I don't think it will have changed much since that last update that they did for the, um, academy, except they may have had, remember, uh-
February?
Remember when they did the update for the retreat and they had done the hiring for that February academy? I don't think it probably would have changed much for them.
What number were we at then?
They said three ninety-nine.
The, the last eleven positions are authorized come July, and I think there, isn't that their next academy they were planning?
So we go back eleven out of forty-seven and get thirty-six. So we would have added thirty-six positions on top of the three ninety-nine, so we should be at four thirty-five?
I, I don't remember the start.
Right, yeah, because Andrew looks perplexed.
I wanna, I wanna speak to the number that I haven't looked at in nine months, but, uh, definitely we'll give you a status update on all of the positions.
Great. From where we were at budget to where we are currently. In other words, if we were at three ninety-nine and now we're at-
The head, the head count?
Head count, correct.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Great, thanks, okay, item five point zero eight, uh, thanks to that council member, Colvin.
Yes, sir, uh, very briefly, I know, we're all tired and ready to go, but, uh, in light of the new, uh, arrangement with pending legislation about saying shared services, um, if they're not operating below market rate, uh, that each entity should look to do their own for the last eight, ten years, as you know, P W C has been handling a purchasing and procurement process, um, that's very rare and, and basically unheard of with all of our peer cities. We spent approximately quarter to, um, um, finance, Mr. Smith, maybe the last five is a little over a million and three, uh, in, in our shared cost of that. I think we can do it a little more efficiently and a little more controlled in-house. If we're gonna look to do it, because we know P W C calculates their charges a little differently, where they add the overhead and expense, maybe if we're gonna look for some shared, um, some shared responsibilities in some of those services, maybe we can look at fleet with the county, who we know are not really looking to operate for profit. Um, but purchasing in particular, I think we talked about this, um, this is the third time, you know, and that's why I'm not clear as to why they weren't being clear correctional. See, I said the key direction is to start to bring back in the purchasing and procurement process so we can have a little more insight as to how that works. You know, a lot of times we're frustrated, we want to know why it takes so long to initiate some of our council actions, and they say that, well, because we put a request in to purchase in over P W C that it, it delayed itself. Um, just looking for some support to see about bringing that back in-house.
So are you looking for an analysis bring back or are you looking for action bring back?
Action, yeah, we're gonna analyze it and analyze it.
I'm, I'm, I agree. And now, that, talk about fleet maintenance also, and fleet maintenance may be done through private sector, I'm sure, I mean, I was, you know, I had, the legal dealer was doing all their calls.
Right.
And they gave them priority when they, they put a vehicle in, because they knew that was, that was like basic business for them, they always had that, so, yeah, and they took really careful of that.
And, 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 and this is a letter from Ted, uh, to all of us on March twentieth with a discussion, a recap of the, uh, conversation with the county. Said that, uh, purchasing initiatives, there was potential room for that to include outreach to local businesses, shared financial systems, and, and then fleet maintenance, since our vehicle maintenance cost increased by three hundred thousand this year, services still not satisfactory, said that, uh, the county said that they could handle more capacity, so maybe some opportunity to, to work with them. Purchasing in particular is by the, uh, council.
Well, we, well, we got, uh, stated, all right, before you stated, what are your final expectations?
To ask direct staff into standing up, uh, the, the capability or the capacity to handle purchasing and procurement back in-house.
Okay, and you feel like you have collected enough information that, uh, that's definitely a correctional again?
Well, I, I would, I would expect that, that in the process of following those, those guidelines, that they would keep us briefed as to, you know, the information that we need to know in order for it to make it happen. I think their first step is what they're saying they're confused about is to whether we're telling them to or-
Them staff?
Yes.
Okay, uh, got a, um, quasi-motion, a quasi-second, uh, your quasi-vote, uh, goes in favor, raise your hand, please. That is unanimous of members present.
We're unanimous?
We're unanimous.
Right, the council said it.
Is there a motion, do a adjournment?
Their speech worked, he said, "We ain't working, yeah."
One extra box lunch, dinner, was anyone to say that all of you?
One of them maybe have, I got a drink.
Mr. Colvin, I know this meeting has already ended, but what are your expectations on this, so that's a breakback, is there a lot more?